It is seven o'clock. Welcome to the City Council meeting on Thursday, February 18th, 2021. The opens meeting act is posted on the east wall of the council chambers. Welcome to everyone that's here tonight. And if you would, please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gene, the rule call.
Wagner.
Here.
North.
Here.
Wilkinson.
Here.
Hubbard.
Here.
Piper.
Here.
Lonest.
Here.
Van Ash.
Here.
Hoffman.
Before we go any further, we have been given a thank you. Please accept these small tokens which I'll pass around to the council for appreciation from the students of Emmanuel Faith Lutheran School. Just very sweet of them. For all of that we do to serve the community, which, hey, you know, we're gonna take a thank you when we get it, so.
Thank you.
Very nice. So they made some little net. Go ahead, Joan passes. Then they made some magnets for everyone to take, which is a very nice gesture from them, so I thanked them on that of all this. Charlie's not here tonight, so just for the mood of the meeting, you might just sit that there, just so that we remember that. Okay, on with our agenda. Next of the minutes of the February 4th, 2021 meeting. I think you were all sent those. Is there a motion for their approval?
I reviewed the minutes. They looked accurate to me, so I'll move for approval.
Second.
Are there any additions, corrections, or comments on those? Seen none, Gene?
Wagner.
Yes.
North.
Yes.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Lonest.
Yes.
Van Ash.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Next are the department activities reported in sewer and water operational statements. Are there any questions on those? If not, I would look for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Gene?
Wagner.
Yes.
North.
Yes.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Lonest.
Yes.
Van Ash.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Next agenda item is claims of elected officials.
Yes, we have two claims for elected officials. One for Tony North for North printing an office supply in the amount of $1,422.29. I move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
In a second, Gene?
Wagner.
Yes.
North.
Epstein.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Lonest.
Yes.
Van Ash.
Yes.
Hoffman.
And we have a second claim for elected official Jeff Piper for Piper's Inc. in the amount of $159.56. I move for approval.
Second. Motion in a second, Gene?
Wagner.
Yes.
North.
Yes.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Piper.
Epstein.
Lonest.
Yes.
Van Ash.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Next are the claims for the period of February 5th through February 18th, 2021.
The finance committee met yesterday, and I'm going for approval for the claims for period of February 5th, 2021 through February 18th, 2021.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further questions of the finance committee? Seen none, Gene?
Wagner.
Yes.
North.
Yes.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Lonest.
Yes.
Van Ash.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Thank you. Next is city administrator report. Joe?
Just, I want to extend my sincere thanks to the Public Works guys. If it wasn't cold and snowy, it was cold and water mains breaks and long hours on both of those. So they did an excellent job, and I know they're, they gotta be low on sleep, but thank you, guys.
Absolutely. It's been a rough, rough stretch. So anything further?
Nope, that's it.
Our next agenda item is the issuance of refunding bonds on the aggregate amount of not to exceed eight million, and resolutions authorizing that, which is the next few items. Hello, how are you?
Good. Scott Keen with Piper Sandler. I have just one handout, if you wouldn't mind taking one passing along. It's a summary of some action that will be requested from the council over the next few meetings. We met with the finance committee yesterday and talked in detail about potential refunding of the city's Series 2015A, 2016 sales tax pockets. There are, we've analyzed all of the outstanding bonds of the city, and they are the best candidates for refunding for interest rate savings. Behind them come the water revenue bonds of Series 2014 that have very significant savings, as well as the 2014 public safety bonds and two series of general obligation bonds. Tonight, though, we only have the ordinance related to the refunding of the two series of sales tax issues. And there are three actions that are required. Two resolutions that authorize the redemption of the two outstanding series of bonds, and then the ordinance authorizing the issuance of the new refunding bonds. Now, I'm happy to spend as much time as you'd like talking through this, but in very quick summary, at a conservative estimate of today's interest rates, we could save by refunding the two outstanding series of bonds over $66,000 per year, or on a present value basis, recognizing again that a dollar of savings we might get 10 or 12 years from now isn't worth as much to us as a dollar of savings today. So by convention, we take all those future savings, and we discount them into today's dollars. By going through that process, that $66,000 per year of savings translates into present value savings of almost a million dollars. It's 895,000 dollars of present value savings. So a very, very significant opportunity to save the city and the taxpayers' expense, and the same will be true of the other issues as well. Our game plan is with the council's approval tonight. We will finalize the offering document, the preliminary official statement that goes out to investors, and ship that out to those investors tomorrow, and actually hustle to get to market next week, probably Tuesday of next week, and lock in the interest rates. We are at historically, nearly historically low interest rates. It is a very favorable time to be borrowing. Not such a favorable time to be the banker buying the bonds, but a very favorable time for the city to be borrowing. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, it's a, it's a wonderful opportunity for us to do this right now, and we looked at this when a year and a half ago, and it wasn't near like this. So this is, you know, rates have gone even lower than we thought, when they were, we thought that they were as low as they could be.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Mary. We look at these issues every few months, and generally try to come to the city and report on the update of the refunding capacity every, at least every year, if not more often than that. And we've never been anything close to this. So we are at a very good time. The city has, all of its debt are, all of its debt is currently callable, so we are in the position. The time we sell bonds, we promised the bondholders we won't call them away from them for a period of typically five years. And all of the city's outstanding issues are at or past that five-year date, so that means we can do it and really maximize the savings. So it's a, it's a good time all the way around.
Other questions of Scott while he's here?
Honestly, and it's not really a question, but I would like to thank him for spending almost an hour with us the other day going through this in detail, because it was very explanatory, and it's pretty much a no-brainer if you really want to save the city some money.
Yeah.
The only thing I would like to touch base on for the public knowledge and the rest of the council's knowledge is the fact that this does not actually come into the $10 million, you know, refinancing for the year.
Bank qualification.
So we're actually not even close to that with doing the refinancing.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm glad you mentioned that. The IRS allows what they consider small issuers to issue up to $10 million of tax exempt debt in every calendar year and declare that debt bank-qualified. One of the actions in this ordinance is the city council designating these bonds bank-qualified. And that means that banks that buy the bonds not only receive the federal tax exemption, as well as the state tax exemption if they're Nebraska bank, but they also receive an additional offset for their cost of funds. So it makes bonds like these very appealing to banks. And that was the federal government's intent. They wanted to help. They recognized that the city of New York doesn't have any trouble selling its debt. But smaller communities don't have the same capacity to spend the money to get the bonds rated and have, have their bonds sell at fair rates. So they want to encourage banks to invest in smaller issuers' debt. And so you're able to allocate or designate it to $10 million by stating your intent to issue less than that amount as bank-qualified, as tax exempt, and therefore bank-qualified. But because the original bond issues in 2015 and 2016 that we are talking about refunding were designated bank-qualified, that carries over into this refunding, such that the way we're structuring, at least in this payment we're structuring the issue right now, none of the amount of this refunding bond issue will count against that $10 million. And the same is true for the other three refundings that we are talking about, that will be back in front of you in the next few weeks. They might add, we might end up having to, depending on the timing of the issue, we may end up having to allocate $100,000 or $200,000 at most of that $10 million limitation to those refunding bonds, meaning that the city, we are really very minimally impacting the city's ability to do new money financings that might benefit from that designation, such as the financing that you did just last fall for the community center and the auditorium. So it's, it will make maximizing your flexibility in a very good way. Thank you for.
Yeah, I think that's a great answer, because the only thing, the reason I wanted to bring that up too is because, because it's such an extraordinary time for the city to do this, as a council, we may need to look at the fact that maybe some of the projects we wanted farther in the future might need to come, bring to light a little closer to now, while it's, we're in this extraordinary.
Well, I think, I think that's why there's a lot of pressure on the governor to think about whether or not there'd be some bonds for 81, and, you know, for some of this other roadways that have never been bonded before, because of the opportunity that's there.
Absolutely.
Speaking a little off the subject, but not, is as you mentioned, the auditorium and community center, which, you know, just for the council's knowledge, those projects will complete completely by, you know, at the end of summer.
Yep.
So we would probably be looking at doing a bond issue on those in the fall?
Correct. That's, that's what Joe and Pelly and I have talked about. Waiting until those projects are completed, or at least very nearly completed.
And then we would go to the.
So you really have some certainty about the size before coming in and doing the financing.
And do you see any reason why we'd need to be, you know, any more proactive than that going forward, or the rates appear on the long, you know, in the, in the futures to not be going to do a heck of a lot this year?
Yep, you absolutely can. It's something that we could easily, that we could be strategizing a little bit on. I don't know what your commitments were to the bank at the time that you did that borrowing, what the provisions were to allow for early payoff of those, of those notes. But absolutely, we can be looking.
Well, I think it's something we need to be aware of, because we wouldn't want to, you know, start seeing those rates move against us if we have the opportunity to lock some things in.
Absolutely.
But we've got some work to do yet, so. Other questions for Scott? And I appreciate too coming out and meeting with the finance committee and your time, and Jerry, you get an A on your finance committee.
For this reason.
That's very good, yes. So seen no other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As we said, we've got a couple of resolutions that we need to pass, and then an ordinance to get this done. So first would be the passage of Resolution Number 2021-5 authorizing the local sales tax and property tax support infrastructure bonds dated October 20th, 2015, in the principal amount of $5,925,000 to be called for redemption. So we would need a motion.
I would move that.
The motion in a second. Any further questions? Gene?
Wagner.
Yes.
North.
Yes.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Lonest.
Yes.
Van Ash.
Yes.
Hoffman.
And then finally, we have the passage of ordinance 2276 authorizing the issuance of limited sales and property tax supported infrastructure refunding bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed eight million. We would need to suspend the rules, so we need to do that first.
How about to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion in a second to suspend the rules. Gene?
Wagner.
Yes.
North.
Yes.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Lonest.
Yes.
Van Ash.
Yes.
Hoffman.
And then finally, we have the passage of ordinance 2276.
I move to pass ordinance number 2276.
Motion in a second. Thank you. Gene?
Wagner.
Yes.
North.
Yes.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Lonest.
Yes.
Van Ash.
Yes.
Hoffman.
And motion passes. Scott, thank you so much for coming out, and we'll see you again shortly down the road.
In a few weeks.
Okay, that would be great. Thanks so much for coming out and for yesterday also.
You bet.
Our next agenda item is updates by the director of Park and Rec for the 2021 annual report. We thought we better get this job done, and Park, as our Park and Rec director, has some other things on her mind in the next few weeks.
I'm busy.
Might get busy, so we thought we should get this done tonight. So thank you.
Thank you.
Tree, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Every year I come to council, I'm just trying to give you an update on what has happened within this last, the past physical year. So this one is a lot of how COVID has affected us. So you all got documents sent to you through Gene a couple weeks back, but you can just see the amount of, the pretty blue stuff is what we had. And then you can see the impact based on our annual averages of what that one year did to us. So like the auditorium is kind of screwed, because every day that we were closed since March 16th had five rentals, because we were constantly closed for now over a year. So that's the one reason why that one is up, just because it was scheduled to be closed. But the ballpark complex has an average rental within the last five years of 574 rentals, and it was down 241 this year. So the complex did get used by a little bit of your college, had one tournament, all of high school softball, they ended up moving T-ball, so the facility did get used just 241 times less than previously. The community center has an average check-in of 17,157. It was down about 6,000 this year because we were closed for those three months. Same thing with the aquatic center. We have an average attendance of 6,068, and it was down to 6,000 as well. So you can tell that those are very considerable chunks of our membership and the people that come and check in. And the same thing with the park and the park shelters and rentals. We usually have about 166, and that was down 36. So I think a lot of people don't understand how much COVID can affect the Park and Rec department, but just from our stats, the last 10 years that we've been keeping on this really did have an effect on our department and what the community gets to do with it. So I just wanted to bring that to attention in your annual report. Do you guys have any questions about that? So the next thing that I need to talk to you about is the auditorium will be finished soon. The fire marshal's gonna come in next Thursday and do his first walkthrough, and then he'll be back for the final certificate of occupancy March 8. So we are hoping that that allows two weeks' time for any punchless item, and then we'll be able to get them there after March 8. With that being said, we need to reevaluate the auditorium rental rates. So on our part, I think which will actually help the community as well, is we have completely simplified the terminology. So it used to be like in town, out of town, non-revenue, revenue, with alcohol, without alcohol for everything. So we've completely simplified it, and we just do main floor, non-revenue producing event, main floor revenue producing event, and basement. And then if you want alcohol for your event, it's a flat rate for $250. And then we added the day before, the day after setup. It's been very popular, like for a wedding or a home show, they want to come in the day before, and they don't want to clean up that night. So we went ahead and we added that.
Tree, what were the rates for, what are the new rates to rent the auditorium?
So it's only $50 more than what it was. So we were extremely affordable, and I think that's what the city auditorium is meant to be. Nothing is drastic. For a wedding, if you were to rent it now for a wedding, it's gonna be about $900. But if you were to rent it after, and if you guys approve this, it's gonna be $1,000. That mean, the only increase would be the main floor and, main floor will go up 50, and then your take-up, your take-down or setup, the floor will go up 50. So it's just $100 more than what it was yesterday, if you guys approve this.
So, I'm sorry, if I want a wedding on Saturday, and I want to set up Friday and Sunday, what Friday and Sunday cost me?
$150 each day.
Okay.
So the people who are in now, they have to be out by midnight, which means usually their wedding's at, they're out 10:30, they're 11:00, and then they have to clean up and do all that stuff before midnight, and midnight we take them out. Well, this gives the opportunity for them to rent Sunday for $150, that they do their cleanup. We also increased the north dining room to $30 an hour. It was $50, it was $50 a day. But then you run into, well, if I'm only going to use it for four hours, why do I bother with $50 a day? And to rent the community center north dining room, it's $15 an hour. So it's just, you get a nicer room in a whole different building for yourself, so we just increased it $15 for that one. Athletic rental rates, I didn't mess with besides the dining cage rentals. I usually discounted it anyways, because we'd have teams in there, and they would do an hour for $10, or for $10. And I'm like, it's just simple to just do $5. It's 99% of your community, there are a couple softball teams from a pool that will make their weekly trip down to use the auditorium dining cages, but I think this just allows it, we'll get a little bit of cash for the usage, but at least people are using it. So this is what is recommended and approved by my Park and Rec board, so now it's in here, guys, if you want to ask me questions or approval for this. Our first events are booked for March 21st, March 25th, and our wedding is April 2nd. So we are fast to get started.
So the idea would be is that the community center, the community center staff, your people are going to move over to the auditorium and house out of there until the community center's back open?
Yep. So we're gonna be homeless for probably about two to three weeks. Where our staff will just show up every day, and we'll clean, and we'll organize, and we'll put everything back. And then once we get that certificate of occupancy to get into the auditorium, auditorium will be ran like the community center. So we'll turn back to the community center hours, our part-time staff will come back, and it'll be free to the public. So we're gonna bring over two treadmills, two elliptables, and the free weights. Obviously, there's hockey, there's basketball, there's pickleball, but any rental obviously takes precedence, and that will still be a charge.
So that equipment's gonna go down in the basement?
The weight equipment will go down to the basement, because then we're just moving it up and down the stairs for every single rental to get out of the way. So that'll be in the basement. The basement will continue to have two dining cages, two ping pong tables, an air hockey table.
So we are gonna be able to offer people some, some things for their community center membership while we're closed?
Yep. And I, Moon Ball, the ball over there, pickleball, I think they requested seven random times every single week to go play, so they're looking forward to coming back. And then all the normal rentals that we have.
You said wedding rentals doing like $150?
A wedding rental for a whole building will be about $1,000, depending on if they want the date after cleanup.
Okay, and then they'll have that $250 for alcohol?
$250 for alcohol, yeah, so they'll do.
At one point, I could have swore it was $500 for the auditorium. Is that, am I that old that I have it down there?
$500 used to be the main floor revenue producing event with alcohol. Is this the old process or the new process?
This is a new one, that's why I was saying.
No, I don't know the old process of that.
And I paid for my parents' wedding anniversary way over that. I paid an alcohol fee.
Yeah, you had just had it like two years ago, too.
Yeah. And I paid an alcohol, I thought it was, but I mean, and I paid the day before, and we got, they were nice, and we were out of there by one day.
There you go. I think it was $550 for revenue producing event with alcohol. So we just upped it. We upped it $50 for the main floor revenue producing, and then $250 for alcohol. We pulled, we pulled the alcohol out, because that was what was so confusing, is next thing you know, you have revenue producing, non-revenue producing, revenue producing with alcohol, non-revenue producing with alcohol, and it's just easy to pull that out. Because really the only thing that has alcohol in the auditorium is a wedding. Home shows, crap shows. I mean, they could obviously offer all that, which Jeff would like.
Until you start booking, until you start booking some music and things in there.
Yeah, I think honestly that would happen, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and you were the convention center, so it's on marijuana rates?
A lot higher than that. I compared that. I'm at Old Terry, and Terry was the one that actually said she pulled her alcohol out just to be a lot easier for everybody, so they have a flat rate for alcohol. And then they only do damage deposits for weddings out there, too, which I think is smart, because I do damage deposits now for everything, and all we do is send money back to people. Like, here's your $20, here's your $100. So it's just easier for us to do a damage deposit for our rowdy crowd, whoever, than our people that are disusing.
Isn't the whole building at the convention center, like?
The convention center has lots of different options.
Right, but the whole building, or if you were using the whole ballroom, it's close to 2,000?
I was gonna say, it's like 2,700.
Yeah, I mean, it's that plus to use the whole thing.
Yeah. Don't quote me on that, but yeah.
No, I know it's in that range. I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that we were still a very reasonable option.
This sounds like, this sounds like somebody thinking it might come someday.
Yeah.
I think it's very conservative, considering that it's a brand-new facility and all the upgrades, because, I mean, being a person that's in business that used to use that, you know, you could only use one plug-in in the whole kitchen for years without sparks and stuff. So, I mean, being able to have a new facility is pretty conservative.
Well, I've worked out there with a number of roasters going, and I could see how many times I had to stitch.
You break one coffee pot.
So, and it is, you know, it's very reasonable, the new ones, I think.
One question I had, Tree, is, it's one of the things I'm going through kind of in this same business, I'm on the same line. What kind of services come with that? Is there setup services or anything, or they just?
They're responsible for everything.
They have to do the tables and chairs?
Yeah. So we, if they tell us that we need 200 chairs and 50 tables, we bring it up to the main floor for them, and then they're 100% responsible for setting up themselves, cleaning everything down, taking the tables and chairs and putting it back on there and all the trash.
But they do get the tables and chairs, though.
We supply them, they just have to set them up.
Yeah, they just set everything up, whereas the community center, they, they design it all for you. We're just like, here it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we walk in, put this up out, and then we'll come back and go walking back.
Do you want to, I, I know you want to talk about the community center, or do we want to go ahead and, are we okay with these rates, and you want to pass Resolution 2021-7 for setting the auditorium rates before we move to the community center? Does anyone have any further questions?
I have one.
Yes.
I hope so.
The electrical should be good. We may have to.
That's good enough for me, she said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll make it.
Very high top, because the biggest thing right now is the stove. For you guys, this is a stove, a soup supper. So the stove was original to the building, so it's a 1940s gas.
We may need a new electric stove.
We're gonna, we're gonna need a new electric, let's just put that out there. We're gonna need an electric stove. Right now, we're gonna test, you bite the oven, bite it, and turn on the gas and throw the match in it.
And that'd be something.
We're gonna need a new one, and we took the one in the basement, which was just as bad, and we recycled it, and we got $13. So I would imagine that we'll owe another $13, and.
But somebody held it away.
Well, staff did.
Oh, dear.
So we probably were the negative by the time that, staff took it to the office.
Do we have a motion?
It all sounds good. I'd like to move for approval, Resolution 2021-7.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any further comments on this?
Thanks for your work on this.
Yes.
Seen none, Gene?
Wagner.
Yes.
North.
Yes.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Lonest.
Yes.
Van Ash.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yeah.
But, um, we have discussed that there, uh, there's no better time to figure out what we really want as in the community center and what we really want in the auditorium. So with both of these buildings being reman- or renovated, this is the time to really look at the future needs of the community and what we can do for each of these buildings. So for an example of what we all talked about would be right now, the community center, it has changed in its fifty years of existence to more of a rec center fitness place. So is this the actual proper location for the Anna Palmer Museum? Is the Anna Palmer Museum better suited elsewhere? What would be a better idea for the place of the Anna Palmer Museum? What is, do we want to keep the weight room? Do we want to enhance the weight room? We're getting, pretty much getting a brand new pool, um, and that's such our niche is the pool.
And just so everybody knows, the museum is completely empty. Everything that was in there was out of there because of the asbestos removal. So it's either being stored, the big stuff at the airport and the smaller stuff at the senior center for a place to get out of there. So it's all out of that building at this time. So that's, I think, a logical time to think, what do we, you know, what do we do? That I don't know is if we have the answer particularly.
Yeah.
Exactly. And so I think that's what's good to get it out for conversation and have the, the public have a conversation about what they think about that too.
Absolutely. And that's what was the biggest thing from the parking rec board is they want community input. So this is kind of where I need direction from you guys on what's your input, what's your guys' idea for this? Do we need to continue to make or transition, I say, to make the rec center more of a family atmosphere? So right now we have the weight room, the swimming pool, the basketball court, but we really lack space for that upper elementary, lower middle school and down. So do you, do you make a youth center? And do you have, um, like the children's museum type of stuff? You bring some of those aspects into the community center for the littler kids? Do you do, if like, if any of you guys have been to the children's museums in Lincoln or Champion Fun Center or Lost and Fun, we do ball pits and slides and indoor playgrounds? Is, is that something that we want to transition into the community center as well? To make it an all-inclusive family space for the public?
Sure you might want to express a little bit more of the numbers that attended the museum versus the recreation facility.
Yeah, so, um, I'm a numbers geek, as most of you guys know. If you don't know yet, we do count the numbers. We'll soon know. Um, I've been the director for ten years now, so dating back, um, not necessarily ten years, but, um, since October two thousand and fourteen, so six and a half years. The community center as a fitness and facility center has had one hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-five visitors that have used the facility for fitness. The museum in that same time has had one thousand eight hundred and eighty-four, one thousand eight hundred and forty-five people. That's one percent of everybody that walks in that door goes into the museum. So it breaks down to the museum has an average of twenty-six people per month, which if you go back early on, it was great. Um, we had lots of tours. We had, the fourth graders came in, so the numbers were a lot higher. The numbers dropped off dramatically in, uh, around August two thousand and seventeen. So we went from having about four, like twenty to forty people a month to six, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, six, thirteen, nine, nine, eight, and then.
And then the last couple of years, we've averaged just about a hundred.
Yeah.
Total for the whole year.
Yeah, so.
And Jeanie would say that half of those people are waiting for kids to come out of the swimming pool.
Or their kids that go in. Um, so a lot of the things, like the York College attendance has, for the fitness, has actually gone up tremendously because York College, um, closed down their weight room. So now York College uses our facility a hundred percent. So York College has an average of two hundred and nine students a month. Since October two thousand and fourteen, they've had fourteen thousand, two hundred and twelve kids come in. Um, our new memberships purchased, we get about two hundred and seventy new memberships purchased every month, which is great. The average, or the total numbers of members that have chuffed in in that time are nineteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-two members. So then I did a membership, members excluding the York College is a hundred and one thousand, six hundred and ninety-one. And if you lump in your college's attendance with the members attendance, that's where we get the total of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-four, fifty-five people have walked through the doors of the community center since October two thousand and fourteen.
How many procent square foot is the Anna Palmer Museum?
The Anna Palmer Museum right now, um, if you include all the little nooks and crannies, it's about four thousand square foot. If you do not include any of those no- nooks and crannies, it's two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five and three quarters square feet. And the nook and cranny room should be like, um, the curator's office, the, there's a DAR room and there's the sod room.
And there's no way to possibly have a rotating display or like, it's only partially using that space? And you bring stuff out and then rotate the stuff in a smaller space where you can utilize some of those spaces?
I think that's a hundred percent possible. I think the current location is not. Because how would you designate a double set of doors, go to the right to the museum, go to the left to the, the kids area?
And we have no paid, there are no paid museum employees.
So who's gonna rotate?
Right. Right, the guy with the idea. No, but that, that's an issue too. I mean, you know, it doesn't generate income, it doesn't have a budget, the councils haven't committed money in the budget for it, actually has cut some out of it. Um, so it doesn't have somebody that is respons- you know, we have, we've had great volunteers, we have a great volunteer now that probably puts in more time than if you would pay someone.
Absolutely. Nancy does a fabulous job.
I mean, no question about it, but, you know, it, for sustainability over time, I don't know.
So I have this big master plan in my head about how fabulous it is and what we could do with it, um. And if I were to choose and have, have all stay within York, I would move the weight, the current weight room up to where the museum is. I would put a youth center in the ba- in the basement and have like the whole entire floor be youth. Where Michaela's office is now, we'll take one of those nook and cranny rooms in the museum and move her upstairs. And then that, where Michaela's office is, we turn into like a birthday party room and our youth program room. Because right now our youth program room is our meeting room. So if you come in at five, you're gonna have litter and paint all over your, your meeting room stuff because that's where our kids are. So then that area allows, like, if you, someone wants to rent the youth area in the basement, they can get that room and then we can reserve it, you know, for an hour. They get the hour themselves. They have their own door. Um, and then the museum would actually, I, I, like I said, if I had all the say in the world, I would move it over to the auditorium and I would do a rotating thing. I would give them a space and then say X, leave it X amount of feet, two hundred square foot or whatever. And then that would be a marketing tool to get people to continue to come back is, hey, this is on display for three months. Come back in June because now we're gonna do this display and these highlights. And the auditorium has more than enough room to store all of the artifacts. So while I was cleaning up my office to move everything to the auditorium that we need, I found documentation that this has been talked about since nineteen ninety-eight. That's twenty-three years that relocating the museum has been on the table. Um, they have documents from the department of the interior, United States Department of Interior saying that the artifacts and the way that the storage and everything in the museum is not beneficial to what's there. Um, then I go back to parking rec board meetings from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand, saying that they discussed this too. I know this has been a big push of mine. Um, I think ideally we would all love this stuff at Wessels, and I think that would be the absolute best place for it because of everything, that's the same population would come in and it's all the museum artifacts at Wessels. So I think that as our parking record also thinks that this is the long-term plan at Wessels. But right now we're looking for what is best for each facility. So if we keep the, what's best and what's the community, community needs for the community center, what's best, what's the community needs for the auditorium? Which is, does the auditorium?
A number of, and, and we don't have a solution to where this goes for sure. I mean, it would be, it would be great if it, I mean, at some point we're going to, we have some time. We don't want to have to rent a building. You know, we own enough buildings. It needs to go into something that we own, I think. Unless somebody's going to donate some. But if you go to smaller towns and see where museums are, a lot of them use downtown buildings. A lot of them have it in the retail area in the downtown. It's a draw. It brings people into town. Um, so I mean, I think we're just trying to throw a lot of thoughts out there right now. You know, just to see if, uh, you know, where that goes and then turn it back to the parking recommending to keep talking about it over the next couple of months and see what we can get, you know, what we can get done.
Yeah, I think this is the part that now that, um, I hope that community members reach out to you guys and you guys just want to let on to me and get their input, what they want. I mean, it's their community center. It's their city auditorium. So if they think, hey, I want an innovative area in the auditorium so I can do my plastic printing and three D printing and all this other stuff, like, if that's a huge need, then maybe we need to look into that. Whereas if the need is a youth center, I want to be able to drop off my five-year-old for two hours to go hang out, well, what is there to do in the community center? What happens on no school is, is they play basketball, they get in the pool, they play volleyball. They play basketball, they, they eat a snack, they hang out. So I think we need a designated area.
I mean, I think the challenge exists at the community center, just like it is to the auditorium where we're spending three and a half million plus a little. What do, how do we use that building more? Um, the same thing at the community center, we're putting a million and a half, at least dollars into this facility. What brings, what's, what's the most useful way to use it for the community? And how do we, how do we get more people in there? How do we generate hopefully some more revenue? But create, you know, fill the void that I think is, and I think everybody's talked about for twenty-some years. That there's not enough for, you know, kid places to go in town. And if you think of that as a YMCA, a community, you know, those kinds of things, that whole thing should, it should just be family oriented. And, and, and health, exercise oriented. I mean, that's my opinion. I'm just not sure how all the pieces fit together right yet.
Could I ask one question on the city auditorium on that basement? How often is that actually rented? Is there any room down there?
Yeah, so the basement is actually the biggest location. So the basement of the auditorium, let me get kind of it up. The basement auditorium is six thousand, four hundred and forty-one square feet and that excludes, um, on the south side, there's three rooms. It's the civil defense, radio and coke room is what they're labeled on the blueprints. Um, so that room is huge. So, um, there's more than enough space there, but that would take away from any rental we have. So the basement is obviously the cheapest rental that there is. And it gets rented for a lot of community areas. Um, that'd be the biggest rental of the basement. Funerals will go downstairs. Um, and then overflow. So graduation uses the basement for their prep. Tool option, boy scout option. Um, those are probably the biggest ones that use the basement. So if you were to move it downstairs, which is what was recommended in nineteen ninety-eight, and they have like a little group, they have, they drew on a blueprint of what they would do. Um, they decided to put it down there and then they still have like a sod area, which would be great. You would just lose their rental income for that spot. And I can figure out what that number is and let you know in the past couple of years of.
Would you need the whole basement? Do it?
No, because the current museum is actually a three thousand square foot, so you could probably.
But then you look at the offset of what, a few times a year that you rent that and the offset of how many more people would join the community center. You know, or pay due, you know, bring, but, you know, as an offset. I mean, I, none of it should stand alone. It's all, you know, I mean.
It's definitely a misfit of a place of where it's at.
Right, it, it, but that would be your offset of income is, is the
Yeah, the increase in.
The increase at the community center would offset those rentals, which would be, which are limited. I mean, to have not that many of that, but. Well, we have a lot of thinking to do about that yet. So we're not looking, I don't think you're looking for, you know, we're really looking at the discussion item and a.
Yeah, I think we both mostly need to have, well, any type of discussion is good. Um, I'm predicting the musi- or the auditorium, I can't talk. We're predicting the community center will be finished by August. So if we're gonna do something, I would like to know June or July at the latest. So like I said, any community members that come funnel, please let, like, wrap their stuff, let me know and I'll keep it tally. And then we're meeting on Tuesday at the parking rec board to just discuss what's up with this, but then we'll continue to funnel through them and hopefully I'll be back to you guys in June.
I think it's worth noting that obviously you're on the right track with your ideas. I mean, if we could possibly pull it off some way, I would, I would hope that you'd have that part at least to go on.
You've been standing up quite a while, so any other questions? I know, any other questions for Shree? We're gonna let her go. We're gonna let you go-go if you want to too. All right, thank you. Our next item is to approve an HC agreement between the city bureau and the department of transportation. We did that, didn't we?
We did that.
Yeah, we did that. Nope, that's fine. I missed those. I have missed them before, so I appreciate the double check. Approve the HC agreement between the city bureau and the department of transportation. Division of Aeronautics for the York Municipal Airport, uh, number three thirty-one, zero one zero four, zero one six, two thousand twenty-one. This is for the project airport snow removal equipment resolution twenty twenty-one dash three.
This is just a formality with the state saying that they will act as our agent between the city and the federal government. So it's just a formality segment there for doing that.
Are there any other questions to that? We would need a motion to that. I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Jean?
Wagner.
Yes.
Nor.
Yes.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Heather. Piper.
Yes.
Lomis.
Yes.
Zanesh.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Uh, next is the purchase of a turf mower.
The, uh, in this year's budget, we put seventy-five thousand dollars in the budget. Half of that was for the parks, half of it was for the streets, so they're gonna split it. The staff went out, got quotes, got three different quotes. And they are as follows, you know, from Acres Equipment for John Deere for fifty-two eight, fifty-two thousand, eight hundred. Uh, Turf Works, uh, for fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and Midwest Turf Irrigation for a Toro for sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and eighty-four cents. Obviously, John Deere is the cheapest. Uh, ideally, the city crews would like to have the Jacobson. Everybody bid a twelve-foot, uh, for some reason or another, Jacobson bid both, a twelve-foot, excuse me, eleven-foot and a fourteen-foot. Crews would like to have that fourteen-foot from the standpoint, get more done, um, less time to do it, things of this nature. But again, the difference between the John Deere and that, you're talking an additional eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. We were, we got quotes on trading in the equipment and most of it was about basically fifteen thousand dollars we can deal with. We cut a deal with, um, with the Toro group and said that basically they could find, and they found another city that would buy our used equipment and give us twenty-six thousand dollars for it. So.
So that bums Toro to the cheapest.
Right.
What's that?
That makes Toro the cheapest.
No, no. This is an outright sale. It's not a trade-in. Because if we were to do the trade-in, they would, everybody would kind of give us into the thirteen, fifteen thousand dollar range. So we're better off selling it outright, declaring, declaring it surplus property and selling it outright and then just buying the other piece of equipment.
But Toro has the buyer?
What's that?
But Toro found the buyer.
Toro found the buyer, I guess.
So what sizes are all of these? The John Deere is eleven footer, right?
Oh, the first three that you see on the first page here, oh, I guess you have it necessarily in front of you.
No.
Uh, it was in the staff report. They're all eleven footers. Uh, no cabs, I mean, they're out.
So this is what we use in the parks. Um, so we move all the parks with the big grass areas and then we also move the street and want gradeways. Um, so they get a lot of use all over town, which is why they are split between the two, um, streets and roads. So yeah, so the one that the parks and streets would want would be the fourteen-foot Jacobson, fifty-eight thousand, I think. And then with the trade-in, you do minus twenty-eight, twenty-six thousand, split that into two because the street's doing half and the parks are doing half. So I think it's like seventeen thousand per budget. Each budget had thirty-seven thousand dollars allocated, so it's a savings of about twenty, twenty thousand dollars. Um, the John Deere is still the cheapest option. It's smaller. We actually talked to Grand Island who uses John Deere and they have tons of problems with that. So we, and right now all we have is Toros. So we're willing to try a Jacobson because it's bigger and it'll save us time and money in the long run.
And on the fourteen-foot Jacobson, somehow somebody made a mistake and they were only supposed to make like twenty of these units and they made like two hundred units. So they're giving a special deal, I think, just to get rid of them too.
Fifty-eight is for the first?
Fifty-eight is for the Jacobson that we would prefer.
No, the, uh, the fourteen-foot Jacobson is sixty-one. No, the, uh, the fourteen foot Jacobson is sixty-one thousand five hundred.
I didn't, I didn't know this was on the discussion, so I left my paper on the thing, but I talked to Alan the past two days and he would prefer.
So the twenty-six thousand that we can sell to the other community was found by Toro. If we don't go with Toro, do we not pay twenty-six thousand for that?
No, they're, they're really.
What Alan, what I heard was Alan found the, because the trade-in value for lawnmower are nothing. Um, and then he made some calls around and this would probably have been helped with Toro, but he found a different community. Sell it outright to a different town for twenty-six thousand dollars. They'll cut us a check for that and then we can turn around and buy.
That's right. And we can buy whomever we want from.
Yeah.
It's not.
That's not tied to.
Okay, I was just curious because it was kind of, I'm kind of.
Yeah, it's, it's a oddball.
Trying to follow the.
The current Toro mower, because that's all we have, which doesn't mean that you have to trade in.
No, that's a bit slash taxpayer. Somebody thinks it's worth twenty-six thousand. Do we need to replace it right now?
Yes. So we budgeted, um, for a eleven footer mower and a seventy-two foot mower.
That's a four.
They're my Corvettes is what I call them when I ask for a seventy-five thousand dollar mower. Um, but this is the place of the eleven footer, I believe.
It's seventy-five thousand for the two.
For the two, and then that's why it's split off because the streets use it for the, all the rightaways, interstate, all that stuff. Downtown auditorium and then parks use it for all the big, Meeks Park, Beaver Creek Park. All of the parks big. These are the, what the two guys work eighty hours. Or forty hours a week from April until October on.
Do you know how much of a time savings it would be as far as labor was, hour?
Probably figured that out, but I don't know. Three extra feet per rep.
I know, it's like.
I think it was on the agenda, as soon as I got there, I'm like, oh, Alan, you would surprise this one.
So go along with Matt's, Matt's question though is, is when this was put in the budget and we said we needed it, um, what, what's happening to it? Is it not, are they not?
Well, they're, they're, they're used all the time, so all we do is we have to send them to Omaha to get repaired. So we then were out a lawnmower.
So they're breaking down a lot, is that?
Breaking down and the mileage? Here, let me tell you. Um, the eleven footer, which is what we replaced, was purchased in two thousand and thirteen. Um, it is estimated the street and parks department puts on four hundred hours a year. It currently has three thousand seventy-eight hours and it's showing this age of maintenance issues.
But if we, we're gonna get up two for one?
No, so we would still buy a seventy-two foot mower and that's fifteen thousand, but that's not, that's not on here. That hasn't been purchased at all. I think the, the deal of selling it to Alma has really pushed this along.
So who has the closest maintenance per, where we can get maintenance on it in the future?
Usually do it all in-house, uh, at the city shop.
So even if we got a Jacobson, they'll know how to work on it in shop?
Well, I would assume.
I mean, is there any difference? Is there any difference in warranties versus the two, three companies?
I wish I knew. I had not.
I don't think so either. I think, I think the way, I think Jacobson is in the biz of making turf mowers and John Deere is probably not. Toro, yeah, maybe.
We do a lot of Toro bulk course stuff.
Toros we have, we have a twenty-seven year old.
Yeah.
That's pretty good, if it's good use four hundred hours a year.
Yeah, so the other one is the smaller one and that's just what we use in the parks and that has three thousand two hundred and eighty-four hours, which is an average of two hundred and forty-seven hours per year. So those are in better shape than these would be.
So in the budget, we anticipated trading one on.
Yes.
We just didn't realize we were gonna get so much money out of it.
We were probably guessing.
Well, I mean, for a small community, these are getting pretty expensive, you know?
My Corvettes.
I mean.
And I never get to drive. Where do I want to?
Well, it looks like if we do both things, regardless of what we do, we're gonna come in under the budget to mount and upgrade our equipment.
Yes.
And get some three thousand hours off some machines. Um, does anybody feel, I mean, I, city staff is, the guys using the machines and the city staff is recommending the Jacobson?
The fourteen foot Jacobson.
The fourteen foot Jacobson.
And that's what Alan wants?
That's what Alan.
I trust Alan.
I agree.
I mean, I think we have to go with it and I think part of this is, is that we put in the budget, we need to upgrade this stuff, so we're spending less money on repairs and, and keep, you know, keep these units moving. If we've got a good sale to move on, I think we move.
Yeah, and so like we budgeted seventy-five thousand and ultimately it'll be thirty-four thousand, so it's still, a thousand dollars less than fifty percent of what we budgeted.
But then you're still gonna buy one for, then we're still gonna buy one for fifteen.
There's another one, you're already making that.
That's a smaller unit.
Right.
So then you do that for one.
Seventy-five, right?
Just one.
This one did, okay.
Just this one.
Well, we're coming down a lot better there then, that's good.
We are.
Okay, does anybody have any further questions about that? Does anyone want to make a motion to that effect?
I still move.
A motion is second to, uh, purchase the Jacobson fourteen foot mower. All in favor, or Jean, go ahead. Sorry about that.
Wagner.
Yes.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Lomis.
Yes.
Vanish.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Um, our next agenda item is we have two task orders that are agreements between the city of York and H D R engineering for the groundwater monitoring at the, uh, York area solid waste H C landfill. Couple of things that are just, that we keep having to do as we work down through this and kind of normal case. Joe, do you want to say anything to that?
Last meeting, we approved, you approved the task order number, I think, twenty-nine and thirty. Uh, here's thirty-one and thirty-two. The, uh, task order number thirty-one is forty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And that is for, again, with the groundwater monitoring. And the task order number thirty-two is for a topographical, uh, survey concerning these new monitoring wells and the testing of everything too, so. Again, you're gonna see more task orders come just because again, we're gearing up to do the new cells. Again, we, these are reports that have to go into the state. H D R has done our work out there for, forever and we trust them.
Any further comments? We would need one to approve task order thirty-one.
Both.
Second.
Motion is second. Jean?
Wagner.
Yes.
Nor.
Yes.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Lomis.
Yes.
Vanish.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Uh, same thing on this one. We would need a motion to approve task order thirty-two.
Move for task order, move for approval. Task order.
Second.
Jean?
Wagner.
Yes.
Nor.
Yes.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Lomis.
Yes.
Vanish.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Um, our next item is, we did, if you remember at the last meeting, we, we approved a couple of open contracts um, with coun, with a couple of council people, um, um, where there, where the, I think, did this come from the? This came, this is state law, but came from our auditors pointing this out.
Yes.
That we needed to approve these type of open contracts with anybody that works for us or serves that would, that we possibly would enter into agreement spending over
Two thousand.
Two thousand dollars. So what we are trying to do through this to follow the state law and our others is just catch everybody. Now, whether you spend it or don't spend it or what we do, we're in an open contract. Nothing's exclusive about this, nothing's, um, nothing's restrictive about this. It's just the normal case of, 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 uh, we need to identify when people have, I wouldn't say conflict of interest, but, but work for the city or, or serve for the city. Is there any que, is there any questions about that?
So this is a good thing for all of our city workers that might do business with us and just have tax money paid.
Right. I mean, they're out there, we don't, and they can do those things. We aren't approving, you know, every last thing and they're, 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 have the right to do things for the city. And we're acknowledging that they work for us and they have other business, uh, they have other business interests from time to time that, that may do business with the city of York. So we can approve all of these in one motion, um, all of those through if, if, uh, if the council so wishes. We don't have to read them individually. We can just cut, um, or do them individually, we can do it in one motion.
I'm going to approve task order two.
Um, this would actually be to approve all the following, approve all of these open accounts.
Open accounts. Okay.
So approve all these open accounts is our second.
Second.
Is there any further discussion from anyone? Jean?
Wagner.
Yes.
Nor.
Yes.
Wilkinson.
Upstanding.
Yes.
Hubbard. Piper.
Yes.
Lomis.
Yes.
Vanish.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Um, thank you. Our last agenda item tonight is, uh, at the last meeting, you know, brought up some of these, we have some hiring situations that are gonna be in front of us. Trying to talk about, um, what kind of requirements or what kind of things the council expects to see there um, from the way of work where some of these department heads would live. You know, and talking to, and looking at the facts and talking to Charlie a little bit and I made a couple of phone calls. It isn't, and I, I think my intent, um, regardless would be for any of the city administrator position, the director of public works and on that they live in, in, in or right around York. Um, the reason several cities I talked to don't have very, really strict is it's because it's really hard to define. You know, what York is and what transportation is and you kind of, it, it's difficult to do. So I don't know what your thoughts are and I, I've struggled, but, but we, we have to know that, that, uh, you know, what, what's gonna be agreeable to you when we bring positions in front of you for approval. Um, we have, you know, we have certain, it, 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 what is the definition of what York is? Is York inside the city limits, which is pretty restrictive? Or is it, or is it York County or is it within twenty minute drive of York? Because a lot of people live in rural, in rural type settings or, and we have a lot of our trading partners, you know? If somebody lived at Spring Lake Estates or somewhere like that, but all of these, all of these small towns in York County come to trade in York. You know, and if somebody was to live in an acre, Jeth or somewhere, is, is that a terrible thing? And I know it'd be great if everybody just lived in the, the city limits. I, I just don't know how to define it. And that's struggling with. Um, again, you know, my goal in this is that when we bring somebody in these top positions to you, our intent is for them to, to be, to turn into York ads. We want them living here, working here, understanding what's going on in York. Um, as the positions get further away from that department, I, I don't know that we enforce them quite the same as it, as with under, under two percent unemployment, um, housing issues, different things, it gets a little harder to do. Um, again, we have as, for some of these department heads, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it's a six month probationary period. Where we can both, we can walk away in six months if it isn't working. It's a little hard to say somebody has to move here during the, and buy a home or make that investment during the six month probationary period. So are we get, do we give them a year if that's the case? Um, you know, those are all things that I've been thinking about and, and trying to do and I know people said we need a policy and I think, I think we do. A lot of communities choose a policy that we don't have anything set in stone, but, but it's part of the hiring process. Of what we expect from, from somebody when, when we hire them, where we expect them to live, what we expect the commitment to be. Um, we don't have to decide, um, in, in stone what we're going to do. I just, I, I guess I'm just, I'm just tired of figuring out what to write down.
I have received email correspondence and I intend, everybody has wanted us to have people reside close to York. I haven't had any, but it says I don't care. So, I mean, that's the feeling that I get from the people that.
Well, I, I don't think that, I don't think it's a question for anyone that, that the choice being, would you like to have these people live close to York? Or not everyone would vote that way. Except what's close to York? You know, and that's the, that's the hard thing. If you're seven miles out of town and, you know, living down a, in a, in a, in an acreage in a development area or outside the city limits, is that still York?
I don't think I'd feel comfortable with limiting people where they can live as much as a time limit of how, where you can be to your job that we're paying you to be at. I think the time limit to get to your job should be this, this circumference factor of where you live. If they got a helicopter and want to get here, you know, they can live wherever they want, but, you know, and just saying that I think it's a time distance because otherwise we're kind of discriminating against, you know, too many property issues.
Right. I mean, I.
I think if it comes down to the time limit, I don't think they should be required to move here within that six months that we're just on a probationary period anyway. But once that happens, once you're past the six month, why not give them another year and a half to give them a total of two years?
I, I just, I just don't want situations to arrive where, where somebody's allowed to do something and then it's brought up as a negative. You know, for them, because we need to be a hundred percent up behind everybody that we hire. And I don't, I don't want this to hang over somebody is, is, yeah, they're gonna live fifteen miles from here and it's like, wow, they should be living in York, you know, and people talk, I mean, I don't want that. You know, I don't, we need to be a hundred percent behind everybody that we hire, um, and supportive of them. And so, you know, we need to be able to tell them exactly what we think, so.
What if we put together a committee and have them do some proposals and then bring them back to the board? I, I think it's gonna be too.
We sure can. I, I guess my thing is, is I, I mean, we're, we're, I'm not saying that we have a, uh, I, I don't have like a city administrator position that I'm offering in the next week, but we are gonna start that process. We do have another position that we would like to come with and, and, you know, I, I don't know if we can wait like another month um, to do that. So I, I guess, I, my intent is, is that at this point, if we have somebody, I want them, I want them to understand that we want them to live here or very near. We want them to be within a very reasonable amount of time to York if they're not. Um, but no matter what you write and what we come up with, there'll be something come up that we won't have thought of. Somebody will be a caregiver to a, to a parent and living in Aurora and now they're thirty minutes and now are we gonna fire them? You know, Sri ends up moving to the farm in five years and she's living on the other side of where, you know, by Benedict and do, so is that not qualified? So I think we just have to remember that people are very mobile now and, and, you know, we don't wanna, we don't wanna pin ourselves in on the same side. You know, we want them part of this team.
I think if there's, I think if, if you have somebody that potentially that you want to offer a position to and we don't have anything set in stone yet and there's no ordinance, their grandfather did.
And, and do understand, my intent is not to have people, uh, my intent is to have people very, very near to York.
And that's obvious. If, if, if we're gonna offer these positions that pay good money with good benefits, that's a law.
They need to know who they're representing.
Right.
They need to live in the community. But we have a lot of people that live in this community that live within ten or fifteen miles of this community.
But if it so happens.
They're here every day.
If they're hired prior to this ordinance being installed, their grandfather.
Right.
Why don't you just say York?
County.
County.
Yep. I mean, you can do that or do a minus.
Well, I mean, you know, the thing is, is just.
They still know you're supposed to be here at such and such time.
Yeah, I have to say something.
I have that deep problem, I think, just keep it away from service or.
Hi, I'm the keynote speaker, you know, with Delaware York. Um, I've had a lot of people actually come to me and talk to me about this, except it was in the paper. And so I guess I, what I want to suggest to the council is that if there is someone that made an administrative position in, or department head type position in this community that is making a very high salary with very good benefits and are deciding policy for the community, that they need to also be, uh, experience those policies. They also need to pay the high base water bills. They also need to be here to experience the real estate, uh, issues, to, how do you change things if you don't experience it? You know, you, you need to be able to be someone who if you're gonna make, help make rules and policies for people, then you need to live under those same rules and policies. And that's, that's mostly what I've heard from the people who have approached me about it. So I just wanted to share that, something to think about.
Thank you.
I've had a lot of contacts about, um, about fifty percent of them wanted to live right in the city of York. Probably for the reasons that Ricky just. The other fifty percent really liked response time. Thirty minutes, well, uh, thirty minutes would probably get to York County anywhere. Thirty minutes could get you over into Hamilton County like you mentioned Aurora. But, uh, it's been about fifty-fifty in my head. Everybody wants them to at least live close. A big percent wants them to live right within the, uh, community. I guess, uh, and I don't know, if you bring families in, I would hate to have somebody that's had a job, literally, maybe because I grew up with horses and they have horses, are we gonna make them sell their horses or are we gonna allow horses in the city of it? You know?
Couple of staffs, I need to say.
Jean, you did, Jean contacted a lot of communities and we got a lot of feedback. I think out of all those communities, only one had the city limits as a requirement. You know, several have response time and more than anything, they had nothing. Which, you know, going and we were looking at a lot of different communities and checking with that, so... I have no problem with this continuing discussion. You know, we're, it's gonna go on. It goes on indefinitely.
One question. Can we have anybody take a poll? Community poll, like, can at least, or, is Hurley do that?
Yeah, I mean, I think you could. I think that, I think the issue is, is that I, I, I think we'll know exactly what we'll find is everybody would love for everybody to live here. I think what they don't understand is how hard it is and how much we've struggled to try and hire people.
Right, but we're representing the town, so at least we know that part.
I know, that's why they elected you.
What I'm saying is, then that way we, we know we're on the right track.
Right, I know. It's just hard to survey every time we've got an issue.
Well, I agree.
And, and, and I think we know how it would turn out. I, I don't think, me included. I, I think every one of us wants people to live here. And in the city limits, it's just, when you get down to the fact that we've had these open positions that people have said and we're having trouble with applicants and we're trying to, to pull it together, what's reasonable? And, and my, my thought is, it's not reasonable to say that you're in the city limits when in fact, those people shop in York, spend their money in York, support York and we have acreages all array, around the communities. And whether even if you look at the trading partners and the amount of employees that come from smaller communities in York County to York, I mean, it is truly the greater York area. So, I am not opposed to at all of continuing the conversation. I just don't want it to stop the process. But do know that my intent is, is that on, starting with the highest, the highest ranking officials, you know, and I don't know how far we go down yet, but those, you know, they need to live here.
Yes. It should be a non-issue when we get...
At that point, yeah. And I think, you know, and, and if we have two candidates and one says they're not and the other says they are, you know, it probably helps us make that decision. Okay, we'll talk a little bit more about, about further discussion there. I appreciate your, I appreciate your input and I, I think it's, it's a good discussion and not an easy topic. So with that, thank you very much. We are adjourned. Yes, Clarence? Is that the one from Lisa?
Oh, Lisa, I can turn.
I can, I, I looked into that with Laura and actually, they, they got behind on getting their vaccines with the weather. But they do, they have, all the schools are scheduled now to get teachers vaccinated in York. So I think this process here is happening. What is happening in other communities, you know, we don't have any control of and, and we, and Laura doesn't really have control beyond how many, how many vaccines she sent. And this week, they were, they were shorted because of the weather. But I think if you all saw that, I think we're in support that that needs to happen. And Four Corners has that on their schedule, Clarence.
And I was, I missed it because I was out of town mediating, but, because I'm up south. I'm on their list, I'm over sixty-five. They had somebody that didn't show, I could have had that, that.
Yeah.
Right.
But they're actually going out, I think they're actually going out to the schools now with a set plan over the next few weeks to, to vaccinate at the actual schools for teachers.
Right, and this, this was at the school. I just was not in town.
So, thank you for bringing that up though, because she was concerned. So, we are, we are adjourned. Thank you.